Into the state treasurer.
Well, Ed, I don't mean to stop you there, but I did get a little far off what this agenda means. This is just the draft idea to give to whatever the council wants to do, whether that's a working group or a committee or whatever they want to do to get the meat and potatoes of these people, or if these people are ineligible, or if these people ask for this one.
Okay. I'm perfect with that.
And I understand you don't want to go too much into things, but I wouldn't like, I'm an educator, so I would like to say thank you. And I'm not sure everyone knows that the state regulates how many preschool positions there are in the state around the state that are free. And that's why we have a lot of these places, because we don't, we can't fill enough, we don't have enough spaces for preschoolers to come to school. So we have magic carpet and so forth. So I'm just not sure if people are aware, the state regulates, and that is something that I was talking to the state with when I first came. And hopefully with the normal school year coming up, I'll be visiting the state and I'll be asking them to put more seats in school districts.
Available.
Make them available.
So I'm adding that to the list. Is that a motion?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Flankis. Any further discussion on this list? All in favor? Any opposed? Here it is, all ordered. I have three, Councilmember City Attorney Manwelly. Discussion for possible action, approval of amended interloper agreement between the city of Ely and White Mountain County for fiber EMS services.
Before we start, Mr. Mayor, my statement disclosure. After 36 years, a member of the volunteer fire department, I'm inactive November 18, 2019. I've stayed for many communications involvement in this area, voting on this.
Thank you. Even though this has to do with the city department and not the volunteer departments?
I don't know how to discuss that.
Thank you. Okay. So, is there anything you want to add on this?
This is the manolo agreement is before you. This was negotiated with our cities negotiating team, county negotiating team. We sent over a proposal. That was outlined in this contract. We also sent over a worksheet with it. I think that's what's more reflected is the worksheet as far as payment insurance and reimbursement. But this has been sent by the county and is back to us for approval.
Are there any questions from any council members regarding this?
Does Renard Chief have anything, any comments on this?
No, we went through, I think the initial problem was they signed it on the contract, so.
Yeah. So that's the reason it's on all business is the incorrect contract was signed previously. So this is the correct contract for us tonight.
I'd like to make one comment about when we were sitting through that time commissioning when they, before they signed the wrong one, there was some talk about an indefinite agreement that's actually on a three-year lifespan. It's what I'm totally favorable to.
All in favor of the motion?
I'll move it through.
Motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My host, I stay.
Four ayes and one opposed. CEO Business, Mayor Robertson, White Mountain County Public Health Officer Darren Coons, forum discussion only. Presentation on current COVID-19 pandemic status in the city of Ely.
Thank you for having me today. There's something on the presses for you all. This was recently posted about 20 minutes ago, our Facebook account with the hospital then to white line talking for the community to grab and do whatever they feel like they want to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to just give a rundown and then?
If you would, I know you didn't have, I think you didn't have a public health forum earlier this week.
We did. We did.
I didn't know that.
We called an emergency public health meeting per the county's agreement that once 75% of the beds or capacity of COVID beds inside the hospital were occupied, that we would hold an emergency meeting. We hit that, let me think, on this last Wednesday, week before when that, we had one person in the hospital, that Thursday we have four. So we kind of, it's kind of exploded as far as the amount of cases. So we called that emergency meeting at the county level. Essentially, the long short, I guess I need to know my rules of order better in that it's hard to discuss anything without amendments and things on the agendas. But we had a discussion and we met because, like you said, we would. Nothing was decided, nothing was changed. As far as an update to this council, COVID-19 is alive and well, darn it. The Delta variant, which probably if you watch the news, it came across India, came through Asia, United Kingdom made its way to America, of course, and here we are. The Delta variant is confirmed in our county. What that means for residents of the city of Ely specifically, those who are not vaccinated are at increased risk. The Delta variant is easier to spread, it's easier to be caught, and when you do get it, it's a more severe reaction. We, as I stated before, we've had four people locally in our hospital. That doesn't include the three that we've shipped out. In discussion with our ER physicians and our local hospitalists, most of the hospitals around our neighboring areas are no longer willing to take COVID patients from our area. Not that we're worse, just that they're getting full. Why are they full? Basically, they shut down their COVID wards, or their extra COVID places to put patients when they saw a lax in, you know, cases coming down, so they went and closed those beds down. And so they're just operating out of their normal ICUs. I met with the University of Utah this week in talking with them, they're starting to delay or cancel elective surgeries again at the University of Utah, just based on the amount of cases they're giving. It should be noted for the record that if you came into the hospital with a heart attack or, you know, some kind of, something not COVID-related, that neither the higher level of care, we'd still be able to place you and get you out and get you stabilized, which is a, which is a great thing. Just to bring your attention, we have currently have 15 active cases in our community. We have six deaths. That hasn't changed, like Evans, for a while. For a total of 660 cases, that's not a good sign with the fire, it's called out when I say deaths. We've, it should be noted, there's currently only one person inside our hospital with COVID. Again, it is the Delta variant. I thought it'd be interesting to put out in communities that since July, we've had 24 cases. 22 out of the 24 have not been vaccinated. Vaccines are becoming very political, they shouldn't be. What we find is that the four that were in the hospital, not vaccinated. The three that we flew out, not vaccinated. So here in Ely, that is truly what, what we are seeing nationwide. You get vaccinated while not 100% preventative, as we've seen now in Ely, we've had two breakthrough cases. It does prevent you from developing a severe illness to the point of hospitalization at this time. And so I'm trying to encourage those, and I can continue to get vaccinated. That's my report, Mr. Mayor. It's councilmen and women. If you have questions, I'll maintain those.
Do have a couple of questions. The hospital's initial plan for housing COVID patients involves moving some of their non-COVID procedures or exams offsite, and we had an agreement with them for the army that's no longer available. Have they amended their plan?
They haven't amended their plan. I think where they, much like the rest of the nation, we were hoping this was over. Sadly, it's not. If push came to shove, I think the hospital's first and foremost thing would be to follow suit, like most hospitals, stop elective surgeries, stop elective procedures. Instead of having four COVID beds, we'd have 25 COVID beds, and we'd have four regular beds for everybody else. So we kind of switched the areas around and tried to do what you know best we could with what we had. I don't anticipate us getting that far. I hope, not going, would, if you're superstitious, but we won't get there.
The other thing I'd like to note, or I have a question on, is that the state's county tracker shows that we have still quite a high test rate for 100,000. Is that accurate? Or is that?
It is accurate. If you, if you take in all the tests that are given between the Newy clinic, the Conny clinic, and the, of course, the hospital themselves, I still feel like our numbers are still pretty decent in testing.
Great.
And so that's good.
Do you have any questions I can add? Do you have any questions in the council? We appreciate your reports. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate your guys' support with the city, and thank you.
Thank you. I have two, Mayor Robertson, Kevin Hayes, a Geoverse discussion only, update regarding Geoverse's installation of a fiber network in downtown Ely instead of Choice Broadband Retail rollout, i.e. residential and SMB fixed wireless broadband in Ely, and presentation of report for the city's broadband solution, SDWAN. I understand.
Yeah. I'm here on behalf of Kevin, but I think Kevin should be on Zoom. Okay. Go ahead first, and then I'll do it.
Mr. Hayes, are you with us?
Someone. Intense.
Yeah. Mr. Hayes, do you want to mute yourself? We're not able to hear you yet. While he's working on that, I'd like to say I'm probably the least educated person on this broadband issue. I know there's some members of the council who've been more involved in this than I have, certainly. This is an update on an agreement that Geoverse has with the FCC to provide a certain amount of broadband service here in the community. They also want an opportunity to update their quote, but we did have some questions to ask them on that.
Yeah, I can go ahead and speak on the quote, and then we'll wait on, wait on kind of broader updates.
I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, are there, Mr. Hayes?
Great, great, sorry about that. I got cut off both over the phone and on video as well, so thank you for that meeting. Yeah, Wilson, there is that, the quote from, from Kenny Myster, here with me, I'm sorry I couldn't be with you myself today. I should look forward to the next opportunity to meet with all the faces face. We took the request from the city leadership very seriously. We looked at a comprehensive solution for a full 21st century broadband connection that's scalable for the city and that will meet the needs of all of the facilities for the city. So Wilson got a great sound of that call, and makes it very clear that you can share the visual with you there. And also the network design that's pretty straightforward and easy to understand, but ultimately, what I'm happy to say is that the design itself provides not only scalable internet access for the cities, that's all hub at city hall, and therefore much more easily managed by your hand services provider, BBT, but also connecting the fire department, the wastewater treatment plant, and all of the surrounding facilities of the wastewater treatment plant. So with that, again, I think for the opportunity to allow Wilson to present that design and quote for you, and I look forward to having the opportunity to implement that project with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Geoverse have any plans to open up a storefront?
We actually just did. Our, we all under a choice as well, Choice Broadband Services.
These people are, the storefront is?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, exactly. So I think we just opened up this one. We just hired one person over at the retail store, and we're actually in the process of hiring another one. At the same time, we're hired a local tech for Choice Broadband Services. Choice is going to be our retail, small business type of service that we offer, Geoverse, TMB, or Enterprise type of solution that we offer. Essentially, we ended up proposing a solution to the city or multiple locations, and our solution is the SDWAN solution. What exactly does that mean? Essentially, we have multiple locations that the internet is all being directed to a main location, so we're essentially a central location or what's going to be City Hall. So we are presenting, we're proposing to provide fiber over to City Hall. So we'll be extending a fiber line, fiber connectivity line over to City Hall, and we'll also be providing a fiber connectivity over to the fire department. And at the same time, there's going to be a bit of variation between a fixed wireless solution and fiber over to the wastewater treatment plant. At the same time, there's two parts to it. So one of them essentially is going to be connectivity, direct internet access to those three locations. But the second part to it, when we ended up continuing that conversation, it kind of looks like there's a lack of connectivity out in that area as well for landfill, the landfill office, the animal control, and then there's a building right next to the wastewater treatment plant. So we're proposing a second part to that, which essentially is going to be a equipment type solution. So we're going to provide, we're going to be providing access points and Wi-Fi solution that's going to allow you to connect all of those three buildings as well. And not only that, but it's also going to provide you connectivity here in the volunteer fire department. I can't wait to do a present, you know, I was going to set up my laptop, and I thought I was going to have a screen and be able to show you guys a diagram. Unfortunately, that does not taste. I just drove out here to Ely, but the solution itself, it's an enterprise-grade level type of solution, which is going to provide you the symmetrical energy that you guys need, essentially to run all business operations. Like in this case, we'll be able to run a Zoom call, there will be multiple people that will be able to connect remotely, they'll be able to be on video at the same time. And I think, and.
So I appreciate that information.
Right.
And we're certainly looking towards a better service at our city facilities, but we also like to hear too about how your guys' deployment is going just generally in the community amongst businesses and residences, and is there something the city can do to help, anything at all to help with that deployment? Because we do have.
I can, yeah, Kevin's actually. I can certainly, yeah, certainly speak to that.
Sure.
So our, we have currently invested a significant amount of money, not only in the city, but also in the general Wi-Fi county area for our retail broadband deployment. That is ongoing. We've built eight, in eight sites in the area, we have a couple more to build. And also noted, as noted, we opened our retail storefront this month there on Aldman Street down in downtown to support that. The project that we've proposed for the city actually works hand in hand with our future plan for residents and small businesses in the community as well. So the fiber design that we have proposed, that will, that we're calling Phase Two, you may hear it, we're doing the downtown project, is connecting the fiber we already built that was largely an education network that currently connects the White Plains County Admin Building, Learning Bridge Charter School, excuse me, the White Plains County, White Plains County School District Admin Building, the Learning Bridge Charter School, and the new Shawnee Drive Community Clinic and Library as well. We're extending that from where we have entered that point near the hospital, that will continue across, across town east to west with a terminus point at Armory. From that point, we actually are placing a note that will allow us in the near future to start building fiber to the home for the communities that are along Hampton Street Route at the end near the Armory, and then again, as we execute what will ultimately be our Phase Three build across Aldman and into the communities on the door side of Aldman headed back to the east where for a little bit more dead property. So ultimately, we have about a five-year plan that involves migrating from the fixed wireless broadband solution, that's our only solution today, to a solution for fiber to the home for most of the rest of the city, and leaving broadband and fixed wireless solution we have today to serve those folks that don't live in the more dead part of the city. I'm happy to answer any questions if I have one.
Any questions from the council regarding broadband deployment here?
I do. In the plan that you are talking about us perhaps opting into, what's going to be your insurance of our internet not going down as often as it does? We go down quite a bit at the most inopportune times, so is your planning going to offer better service?
That is an excellent question, and the answer is simple. You're single-strung into the city of Ely today, and you're hamstrung by a single provider that's been there for ever. What our plan is, is that we do utilize, I think it's the same name here, we do utilize an EBT for backhaul, lock it out of town. However, we've identified a second area that will, that will give us more redundancy, so eventually we build a ring that connects Ely to our data center in Reno, our data center in Salt Lake City, and our data center in Las Vegas. And those are in turn backed up as well, so if the route to Reno goes down, which it often does, you won't, you won't see an effect of that. Not only will the city that we went and Wilson just described be unaffected, but the rip in services will also be unaffected. No longer we suffer from outage, it includes your telephone, you won't suffer from outages at all.
Thank you.
Okay. We appreciate you guys coming out, and if there's anything we can do to assist the continued rollout of broadband in our area for businesses.
Yeah, there's definitely a need, and another thing that I do want to update you guys on is we have updated some of our towers right now. So now there's availability for a 25 by 3 in area connection, so it's a higher speed for some of the residents. And at the same time, we're heavily working with some of the school districts, with White Plains County School District, on a ECF program as well. So essentially, it's a $7.1 billion program that essentially is allowing us to provide connectivity to every single student that doesn't have internet connection at home right now. It's completely fully subsidized, it's 100% fully subsidized, so, you know, if there's a student right now that doesn't have internet connection at home, we are able to provide them the solution, whether it's internet at home or a mobility solution if they fall out of our network.
We just send them down to your office down here?
Yeah, just, yes, exactly. So all of the schools, if you guys can help, you know, if there's any way that you guys can help in just kind of bringing awareness to that. As of right now, we have one school that has sent their information over, but we're trying to essentially gather that information and, you know, submit that for you guys. There's no cost to you guys, it will be 100% fully subsidized, but, you know, when people here are free, sometimes they're skeptical, but in this case, it truly is free.
Sure.
And we can help all the students, so education is important, so we want to make sure that there's no student that, you know, it's not able to do their schoolwork just because they don't have internet connection at home, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. What happens with that? I have three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, appointment of council member Jerry Lee Williams Harper as the city's Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority and RDA board member. This spot was vacated when Councilman Beecher resigned, so looking for approval for that one. So, motion from Councilman Alworth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carson, any further discussion? All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? All in order. I inform Mayor Robertson, councilmember city for a discussion for possible action, approval to add one city council member on signature cards for the city's accounts at First National Bank in Ely, through the resignation of former Ely city councilmember Michelle Beech, who's also seen according to her card.
Mayor Robertson, I've discussed this item with Councilman Spear. He's willing to be placed on the signature cards with everything that means, can be complimentable to notice to come and sign checks. So he is willing to do that for us.
Great. Is there someone else? Is there a discussion there, any others? Anybody would like to add? I'll move it through. Motion to add Councilman Spear to the chart. Move it through. Motion from Councilman Carson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're on deck. All right. I have five, councilmember city attorney Manwelly, discussion for possible action, approval to terminate the contract for legal services between the city of Ely and the county.
Thank you. And I'll give a little more explanation on it. So I began contracting on August 24th, 2020, and over the course of the last 10 months, it's been, I think, really good. I think we've made a lot of progress. July brought some interesting twists for me. I got a call regarding a job that I didn't apply for, and so it's with the state of Utah, with the Energy and Defense Commission as a director over there. It's a position that will involve me in a lot of legislative and other issues that I'm very interested in. And so as I got that call, it's a position I'm going to pursue and would like to do, but with that, I'm unable to continue with a private practice. The timing did come very well. During the last course, I just hired Leo, Mr. Kahoon, who's been for the last month acting as the city attorney. I really gave him a lot of the responsibilities to see how he could handle it, see if there's really something he wanted to do. From my understanding, he's been enjoying it. As the judge indicated, each morning we spend in criminal court, he's handled that responsibility very well. Been able to do a lot of in-depth research being here every single day. I think originally, when I began contracting, the idea was maybe I could move or I'd just be a filler. And so I feel like I was able to fill that gap pretty well. But with that, I did enjoy the time. Sorry for the short letter. It did cause some questions from some individuals, but that's the background on it.
Any questions for Attorney Manwelly? I'll move it through. Motion to accept his, canceling this contact. Move it through. Motion from Councilman Carson, do I have a second?
One second.
Second from Councilman Spear, any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Contact canceled. With that, we'll move on to item six, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acceptance of the mayor's selection for appointment of Leo Kahoon Esquire as city attorney in determination of salary. As Attorney Manwelly mentioned, the timeframe here was just really short. We have someone here on deck who's kind of been in the mix already, owns a home here, has a family here. As the council is well aware, when we do our recruiting, our biggest hurdle definitely seems to be getting someone who's willing to move here or who's already here and qualified. This short circuit's a good deal of that, and saves us the cost of the recruitment process and the time. And again, it seemed like a good fit, and I would like the council's consideration for that point. But we do have Leo here to do something you'd like to add on.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. So as was kind of already mentioned, for the past month, I have been working with Shane in adopting the role as city attorney, and I think in the past month, I've demonstrated my ability to manage the demanding workload and the responsibility associated with that position. I have completely taken over the responsibilities as the city prosecutor, and I've been heavily involved with the civil litigation and the civil actions that the city's been involved I have, to speak to some of my credentials, I do have several years of experience with prosecuting authorities. I worked for the U.S. Attorney's Office, and I worked for the Clark County DA's office and for West Valley City. And I recently finished a judicial law clerkship with Judge Brisk and Judge Framan here in Ely. And as you mentioned, Mayor, my wife and I, we have a seven-month-old daughter, we just purchased a home, and we absolutely love, love it here in Ely. In fact, I've received offers elsewhere, and I turned those down because I was adamant about staying here in Ely. We love the community, and I think if I'm appointed, I will do, I'll be an asset to the city and to the community and to the people of Ely. and to the community and to the people of Ely.
With that, it is the understanding that Shane Manuel will be available for questions and guidance should be needed to our...
Yes, and there's a lot of background information that helps me as things come up, understanding of what's going on here and there. I will be available to Mr. Kahoon throughout the future.
I would also mention that I would personally think probationary period is entirely appropriate. That's the council's brothers. And... Are there any questions from the council for this aspect?
Are you just entertaining questions or predictions or statements?
All of them.
First of all, I'd like to commend you. I know that the experience that you have had will be extremely beneficial in my short time. I completed my first year of law school, and so I know how much you have to know. And I'm also very, very glad that you will entertain continually being a mentor for him. It's a big job, it's a hard job, and I want to say it's wonderful that you see her and has us be planted in the community. So he will only grow with us, and so I think that this young man will be a great prospect for us to stay in this community and continue to serve us in this capacity.
Thank you. Any questions or statements around? Did you get ready for that?
Well, the salary thing.
The salary that was discussed, was it $80,000 a year? It's with benefits. It's what we hired our previous...
Carolina.
Carolina. With, I mean, the discussion being that between Leo and I was that the council has been certainly committed to annual pay increases for the city's employees. And I would assume that would go along with the public officers and officials positions as well. I think it's a fair price for a good starting point. As the council's mentioned before, I think it's a good benefit. So I think there's a lot, there's just a considerable sense.
Doing my own work, I contacted the HR director. About the same question, $80,000, I think that's fair. That's why we got Carolina, and again, recruitment's hard. But the HR director told me that he also works one day a week in Lincoln County. So my input on that is, right up front, I'm not paying for somebody that misses here five days a week. You know, that's the 1%, or one day, you reduce that down, it goes to $64,000 a year. Nobody's going to work for $64,000 a year. I think it's a discussion he needs to have with us. Is he in double dip with the city in Lincoln County? That's an honest question.
And if I could speak to that. That, that was preliminary discussions that I've had with the Lincoln County District Attorney. Nothing has actually been set in stone. It was intended to be a training opportunity where I'd go down there, and it would only be Tuesday mornings. I understand it's an hour and a half drive, but I would, if it were to occur, I would probably be back by noon or shortly after noon. I would still be available on those Tuesdays. But I have recently discussed that opportunity with him, and it's sort of up near. And so it's really not set in stone whether or not that will even occur.
Okay, thank you. Sure, future, you're going to have a lot of midnight work and... So, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Are there any questions? With that, I would, I entertain a motion from the council on their feelings on the appointment as well as to set the determination salary.
I'll make the motion to accept Leo Kahoon, his attorney, with an $80,000 salary plus benefits. And hopefully, he stays here all the time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Second from Councilman Almer, any further discussion? Is that acceptable, Almer?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I, well, I guess we did talk about when that starts. The contract ends...
July 2nd first.
So start date would be August 1st? Start date would be August 1st? We, we already did that. Okay, great. All right. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Item seven, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, direct city attorney draft and ordinance during the White Plains County's ordinance regulating the hours of parks are open to the public. This was a conversation I had with our acting police chief, Sheriff Emerald. The county is, due to some vandalism concerns, they have instigated a new ordinance for their parks, which sets a curfew, as outlined in their ordinance there. He asked if the city would be willing to mirror that, as we have kind of a mix of city and county parks located within the city, it would be easier for enforcement for them. As you're well aware, we have had vandalism concerns as well in our parks. This is meant to address that. For that to go forward, the council would need to agree to have our attorney draft an ordinance mirroring that. You do have a copy of the county's ordinance, though that's not ours. Any questions or...
They're going to, they actually, they actually talk about special event licenses in their ordinance. I'm thinking about some of our bicycle events and different things we have here at the city park. Who would be responsible, especially where they camp, we see a lot of cyclists camp here. If they, if they didn't know, how would, how would we want to patrol back, police that? It says special event license, so it would have to be maybe the beers, tears, and beers organization gets the permit? And police, who's in there?
I would imagine they would just have the permit, and we, our special event permits do go to the sheriff's office so they know what's going on, so they would know people would be in the park at the fastest usual time because there is a special event there. As, as our ordinance hasn't been written yet, that's up for discussion. I don't know how that works.
I kind of, I tend to kind of suspect that because I know this is a just county ordinance, but I just got looking at some of the, I fire every day, and I see fires and over cameras, and a lot of them are bicycles, and I sell them out, and I totally understand the reason why, yes. Because all the vandalism and the Christmas stuff, that the government never stole everything we've ever done. And T1, as they did, they have no teeth to run those kids out of there. They needed to do that. So I'm totally in favor of this, especially if you permit, special event license, whatever we want to call it. I think we need to make sure that's in there to cover all those events that do use our parks.
Any questions or anything else?
I have a question, if I might, and excuse my naivety, but do the police do a regular run around parks at those hours where you know that you're usually experiencing vandalism?
They do, but in many, in conversations with Sheriff Emerald, for example, when we had an incident of vandalism in front of the courthouse where there was a sculpture that got took off the truck, the video surveillance showed a sheriff's deputy rode right by the area, and within 15 minutes, someone came out and did the vandal, and they...